Good morning.
Good morning.
We're going to ask everyone to stand. Pastor Frank. Father Lord, once again we come together to conduct this accounting and Lord we thank you for this privilege that you blessed us to serve before we know that all governments established by you and you've given authority for it to proceed. So we ask your blessings upon this meeting and we thank you and we give you glory in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Frank, this is the first meeting of December and also this start where we will do the election of offices for the Board of Commissioners and at this time I'll call the meeting to order but I'm going to turn it over to County Manager as the Board nominate positions of Chairman and Vice Chairman after which we do the Oaks of the office. But first...
Yeah, we do the Oaks of the office first, sir. And mail?
For those both would be the cancellation of our new County Manager, Mr. Ray Freeman. In commission.
Would you like to see your document? Would you like to see your document? You may use it.
Would you like your wife to hold the document for you?
I would say no.
Aye, very great.
It's always what?
It's always what?
That I will support?
That I will support.
And maintain?
And that's true.
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States?
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws?
And Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina?
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent, there will.
Not inconsistent, there will.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office?
The duties of my office.
The State's County Commission?
The State's County Commission.
And that I will not allow?
And that I will not allow?
My actions to be?
My actions to be?
Influenced?
Influenced.
Not personally?
Not personally.
Or political friendships?
Or political friendships.
Or obligations?
Or obligations.
So help me God.
So help me God. Aye, Jack Owens?
It's always what?
It's always what?
That I will support and maintain?
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws?
Constitution and laws.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws?
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina?
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent, there will.
Not inconsistent, there will.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office?
The duties of my office.
The State's County Commission?
The State's County Commission.
And that I will not allow?
And that I will not allow?
My actions to be influenced?
My actions to be influenced.
By personal or political friendships?
By personal or political friendships.
Or obligations?
Or obligations.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Left on the house, no page in my. Aye. It's always what?
It's always what?
That I will support and maintain?
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States?
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina?
The Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent, there will.
Not inconsistent, there will.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office?
The duties of my office.
The State's County Commission?
The State's County Commission.
And that I will not allow?
And that I will not allow?
My actions to be influenced?
My actions to be influenced.
By personal or political friendships?
By personal or political friendships.
Or obligations?
Or obligations.
So help me God.
So help me God. All right, I'll turn it over to County Manager for opening for nominations, Chairman, Vice Chair.
Good morning. Would you like to open the floor for nominations for the Chair?
County Manager, I would like to nominate Commissioner Linda Hopple as Chairman for the next 12 months. And County Manager, I would like to say that much.
Any other nominations? Okay, closed nominations, all in favor of Ms. Hopple being the Chair for the next coming year, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay, now I would like to open the floor for nominations for Vice Chair.
County Manager, I'd like to make a motion that Jack Owens keep his position as Vice Chairman. I'll start with the nomination.
Nominating second, any other nominations? Close the floor for nominations, all those in favor of Jack Owens being Vice Chair for the coming year, say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, a pose. Okay.
Hold on.
We will take just one moment so everyone can switch seats then.
Can I say a little?
Yeah, we go over here with the...
Before we get on with the agenda, I would like to thank my fellow Commissioners for their confidence and it will be a privileged service Chair. I'd like to thank Commissioner Jordan for his service, it will be a hard act to follow. As those three gentlemen were being sworn in, I thought back two years ago when I was being sworn in and a couple of promises that I had made to myself and to citizens of Gates County, and I still hold those to be very true, that government should be transparent. We should, you know, the citizens should be kept well informed about the issues we're confronted with and the reasons for the decisions we've made. Also, I believe that we must treat everyone with respect and dignity, listen to their suggestions and go forward with our program. We all want the best for Gates County, the five of us who are on board and those of you out there in the public. So thank you once again and I'll try to do it to the best of my ability. Okay, we'll move on with the agenda, the approval of amendments for October 29, 2014. Are there any corrections to the amendments?
Madam Chair, we have, I saw two memorials on page 1546. Fifth paragraph, it said this bound to be applying that act, you take those out.
And that's it.
Page 1553, we have seven, ten minutes. Third paragraph, it's basically in the second sentence it says that that's when the American will come back and say about how much, to be how, just say how.
I wouldn't rather.
Third paragraph.
I do believe there's an typo on that page, third line, spells check and goes in trouble sometimes. I think that's the, that's what the sentence says. Okay, any, a call for corrections?
On page 1553, right in the middle of the page where it said wip, wip, that should, where it shouldn't be white, WIP.
Fifteen?
Fifty-three. Okay, right in the middle of the page. Law is third, that fifth line is...
Also on 1578, fourth paragraph down, it ends with hand, hand, I think it's something else, I don't remember the last. Any other corrections? Do I hear a motion to approve the amendments of October 29, 2014, amendments of November 5, 2014, with the corrections that have been mentioned?
So, aye.
All those opposed, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. And I believe we have an offset of amendments. And that is for November 17, 2014. Are there any corrections on those?
There are no corrections, we do the six. Madam Chair, I make the motion that we accept November 17 minutes as corrected.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, those amendments stand approved. Okay, a minute, agenda adjustments, are there any? Okay, under new business, add item 12, budget amendments. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted?
So, aye.
All those in favor of the agenda as adjusted, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, now we come to delegations, announced delegations, Thomas Hill.
Ladies and gentlemen, County Manager, County Commissioners, first off I want to let everybody know that I want to congratulate the victors on the election day, everything, everyone from NCOS 5, Howard Harnett Bird, all the way down to our County Commissioners who won their seat. I am the Republican Chair and I also like to commend and congratulate Enrol Fod, the fight on Sidney Pierce III. He ran here locally and to my records, he is the first Republican from Gates County to ever run for NCOS 5. We'd like to congratulate him and let him know that we appreciate his service and we appreciate him being out there in the public. And furthermore for Garrett Eagle. This gentleman not only ran in 2010, but took upon himself and his heart to give himself and his service to the county as a nominee for the Republican Party as Chair. And we want to congratulate him. Our records show that he has successfully won and broke the record of any Republican percentile here in Gates County's history. And moving right along, I want to make mention here of some of the rumors, just one, well one very particular. There was a rumor that was going around that if Garrett Eagle was to win the Sheriff's Office, the Sheriff's deputies would be fired. That was just simply not true. That is not the Republican agenda and I can speak from experience when it was my awesome responsibility, that it was my responsibility to appoint two-thirds of the Board of Elections. I had the power to nominate two people and just get rid of all the hired help that was inside the Board of Elections, but we didn't. We kept every employee there. As Republican Chair, I'm responsible for 66.7% of everyone at the polls that work inside the office. I'm also responsible for those in county votes. I nominate those names and they go through an approval process. I nominated specific names and I feel a responsibility for those names. I understand that there were some hiccups during the elections as well. There was computers that went down, there was discussions of issues and circumstances and I sent the Board of Elections a Freedom of Information request under North Carolina Code 132. That was also answered in a very timely manner, yeah, for four minutes actually. So I wanted to congratulate them for being on top of, even when the circumstances was rough and down, they answered in a very timely manner, a very professional manner. And I also understand that you all will have a meeting today dealing with Winkles and personality. My question to you, Madam Chair, will the Board of Elections be discussed today in that closed meeting?
Yes.
Okay, then I will present this to you. If I may give this to you. If you could pass this out to each of the Commissioners. This was the Freedom of Information request that I personally sent to the Board of Elections under the North Carolina Code 132. You will also see that under the United States Code, it's also under 552, I as an individual, being a resident of Gates County, am allowed to send this out, matter of fact, Madam, here you go. These were some of the issues and concerns that Republicans had. And being my responsibility and my duty that I've appointed, again, 66.7% of these individuals, it was my responsibility to find out what the situation's like. So in this request you see with all of its imperfections, the worries and concerns that we have. I've even had concerns, you know, from the Democratic Party that has asked me in private about these concerns. And I'd like to say that we've addressed them, the Chairman answered them, on the back you can see where his response was, "I won't worry making this public to Republicans, not going to be making it public to the NAACP next one." Well, this will actually in a few weeks. So we have no problem with transparency, my chair was speaking on transparency, I endorse that and I hope to see more of that. And I would just like to say that with good faith, I would re-nominate the Chairman in March for his position with Board of Elections. I had no problem with that, I did that with political conscience. My concerns was addressed and I hope this was addressed, any concerns you all may have as well. I felt that it would be my responsibility to come to you face to face to let you know in front of all these good people of Gates County, to let you know what the concerns were, that they were answered and we're moving forward. Finally, last but not least, Mr. Jordan, I didn't vote for you in the last election, obviously. However, I have to say this early by you as Chair, you were always fair to me and I appreciate your fairness and I look forward to continue to work with you dealing with Corbin and Sunbury and the rest of Gates County. And Madam Chair, I owe you to be equally as fair and I look forward for your transparency. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Is there one else on the list that will move down the agenda to announced delegations? That's not, Esther Lassiter.
To the Board of Commissioners, our County Manager, and to all the interested attendees today, good morning. My name is Esther Lassiter and I serve as the Coordinator for the Gates Partners for Health. The Gates Partners for Health is a network of community partners that are dedicated to promoting healthy lifestyles for all ages. It gives me great pleasure this morning to present to you our semi-annual Commissioners' Report that you have in front of you and there are others for the attendees. We have been quite busy since our last report to you in July. Our focus is addressing chronic disease and this was one of our local priority issues coming out of the Community Health Assessment that was completed in 2013. Chronic disease prevention and reduction is one of our primary addresses. There have been several activities since July that addresses chronic disease. One in particular that was completed on November 14th at St. John Ely Zion Church, Gold Chapel and Sunbury and it was entitled Less Talk Diabetes Symposium. Our target audience was those individuals living with diabetes. We had in attendance six vendors from health agencies that provided information related to diabetes and community services that would be available to our citizens. We also had hemoglobin A1C testing that was provided by the Roanoke-Chiwan Hospital. Those tests were taken and back to the hospital and those who received the testing called on that following Monday to get their results. The results were also transferred by the hospital to their local physicians, so we're very thankful that that opportunity was available to our citizens. Our keynote speaker for that evening was Wayne Spade, who works with the Abrahams Regional Health Services in their diabetes clinic and her topic was million members. So we had an excellent evening, evening, if you recall the weather, it was quite cold, very windy, so out of our 65 who registered, we did have 43 in attendance. We are continuing our cancer support group, it meets on the second Monday of each month at 4:30 at Visitor Center of Murchersville Park State Park. This is our fourth year, we began in 2010 and we tried to bring in resources that would help those who are living with cancer or who have lost loved ones from cancer. We are supported with Cancer Support Group by Vayant Roanoke-Chiwan Hospital who funds the meal that is provided to the attendees. Our average attendance is about 15 to 16 persons each month and that's continuing to be very strong. We also had in the month of October, October 27, a men's night out, Help Forum. It was held at the Sunbury Volunteer Fire Department on Highway 32. The theme for the evening was, get your game plan together and tackle cancer. It was an all-men's affair, so even I did not attend. Our keynote speaker was Dr. Joe Tripp, he is head of Emergency Medicine at Vayant Roanoke-Chiwan Hospital. He addressed prostate and colon cancer and from what I heard, it was an outstanding presentation. The men thoroughly enjoyed the information, the food that was provided, although they didn't get to see the keynote game, but they felt that if the game was on, they would have received less information on prostate and colon cancer. We had the opportunity to provide this through a grant funded by the North Carolina Cancer Prevention and Control Branch. Our Diabetes Support Group is continuing. We meet on the second Wednesday of each month at the Community Center at 10:30. We focus in on things that are related to diabetes that can help a person either to prevent or manage diabetes. While these classes are taught by lay leaders who have been trained in healthy living by the Abrahams Commission, Area Agency on Aging. So we have five individuals who rotate teaching those classes. We did have our Holy Souls Walking Challenge, I've lost the years, I think this is year six or seven with that, and this year our winner once again was... And this year, our winner once again was the Newman Swamp Missionary Baptist Church in Corpey. They had sixty-one individuals participating with a grand total of thirteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-two point eighty-four registered miles. So very active church, and I want to share with you that the majority of those individuals are over fifty-five. So they're very active, very healthy, and this is the goal that we're trying to get across to the county. We want our older adults to become more active, because the more active you are, the healthier you are. We did hold our eighth Annual Family Fund and Fitness Day on October the fourth. We had a record break in attendance. We had a clicker. The clicker recorded six hundred and thirty-four, but it was brought to my attention that there were others entering from other areas. So we've given it an estimate of seven hundred. We were fortunate this year to take on two partnerships with the Family Fund and Fitness Day. One was the VFW, and of course, they had their motorcycle, car, and tractor show. And they awarded some twenty-nine trophies. The red vehicle that you see in the picture was the judges' vote for the best in show. We also partnered with Active Rights to School, a North Carolina Safe Rights to School Project statewide. And they set up a bike obstacle course trying to teach young children safety. We are continuing, and we just ended our fourth season of the Farmers Market. The last session was held at the Community Center because of convenience and to partner with other activities that were taking place that weekend. We did sell hot vegetable soup and sandwiches to benefit gyms. And we featured the cooked cauliflower rings, fresh produce, local honey, baked goods, and local crafts. As I said, this is season four. According to state regulations, if we were able to go into season two, we were classified as a success. So hats off to the community for supporting, and hopefully, the community will ramp up along with the farmers and help to make this an even better success in season five. Since 2004, we have been providing healthy tips for families. This is a quarterly mailing that goes out to some fifty-six churches in the community, and it provides a healthy tip each week. This tip is either put in the church bulletins, or it is provided in a public announcement. Along with that, we send a letter to the local pastors, letting them know all of the events that are planned for the next three months that are related to chronic disease or nutrition and physical activity. In conclusion, there is a special note on the back. December the fourteenth, we end my employment as Coordinator for the Gates Partners for Health. It has been an honor to work with an organization that has been comprised of health-related agencies and dedicated citizens whose primary concern is promoting healthy lifestyles within the Gates County communities. A special thank you to the County Commissioners for your financial support and your involvement through my past nine years as tenure in this position. Are there any questions?
I'd just like to thank you for your service. You have worked in the school system for years and nutrition, and you continue your love of that with helping the county. And I'm sure this is just a temporary retirement. You'll find always to serve the county.
I don't consider it retirement, just a new season.
That's right.
I know that Esther is a champion of this cause. She has delivered to us fantastic reporting, and all these things in this book today, we're holding here. Events, I was going to say maybe there's eight or nine, they don't happen on their own. They don't happen without excellent leadership. And Esther, I commend you for what you have done for this program in your nine years. Thank you very much.
I too, Ms. Lassiter. Thank you for your leadership and dedication and commitment to this call and assistance for Gates County. I do have a couple of questions for you. I'm wondering if you will be involved in any way after you step down as Coordinator for the Gates Partners for Health.
The answer to that is yes. At the November nineteenth meeting, I was voted in Vice Chair for the Gates Partners for Health Board. And I currently serve as the Chair for the Chronic Disease Committee.
I want to thank you for continuing to be a part. And also, I don't know, this is a little premature. I didn't want to be selected to take a position that you have held over this period of time.
Not at this time.
Again, thank you very much.
Doctor, thank you for your dedication and your service, and it's just always good to see someone that will step up and lead people to doubt here.
Thank you, Ms. Lassiter, for your service to the community and to all the citizens.
Thank you, Board of Commissioners.
We'll move on to administrative reports. First one, Madam Chair.
The report in your packet is from October the tenth through November the twenty-first. The Commissioners approved a full-time building inspector position, which combined a part-time building inspector and a part-time fire inspector position. And Bud Perron has accepted that position and is scheduled to begin work today. He will be housed in the inspections Department. Department Commerce Secretary Shannon Decker visited Gates County on October the thirtieth. She was joined by Ms. Johnson, Mr. Tim Ivey. She toured along the history of Old Courthouse, visited the new EOC headquarters, which highlighted building reviews, stopped by Murchus Commerce Park to see the Gates House site, learned about Murchus Mill Pond, and ended the visit meeting with local business owners. And I would like to thank the following for assisting with the tour. Phoebe, Peggy Lefler, Billy Wynn, Joey Greenwood, Commissioner Jordan, Commissioner Hoffler, Dan Askew, Vernon Brinkley, Graham and Brenda Hatch, Mark and Nancy Tuck, and Ray Freeman. Would also like to take time to thank the staff that assisted with panning out of Halloween treats on Halloween. The night was a success, and we would also like to thank the Sheriff's Department and the Gatesville Walter Fire Department for providing the truck. Meetings that I attended during those dates, October twenty-first to the twenty-fourth, I attended the municipal and county administrative course in Chappaqua Hill. On November the seventh, I participated in a tour of the naval support activity Hampton Road Center and received an update on the robbery system. Included in your packet is information about a proposed joint lane use study that the Navy would like Gates, Camden, Pasquotet, Curritah, and Quinones Counties to participate in during the coming year. If you would please take the time to review this information so that we can discuss, excuse me, at the January seventh, 2015 meeting. It would be greatly appreciated. On November the twelfth, I attended the Alamo Commission Regional Planning Organization and listened to various discussions about transportation issues in the region. It was recommended that county send a letter of support to Highway 158 east of Highway seventeen, Highway one sixty-eight, and the Mid-County Curritah Bridge be added to the list of state priorities. And during the November seventeenth meeting, the Gates County Commissioners sent a letter of support as well as a resolution to the DAT. On November the fourteenth, Commissioner Jordan, Commissioner Hoffler, and I spoke to Gatesville elementary curriculars about what the government. And since then, I have had several students tell me that they did appreciate us coming to speak with them about that. And they have even called up with a few other questions when they've seen you at school. On November the fifteenth, the Gates County Transportation Plan was available for review and public comment at the Community Center. RPO and state representatives from DAT will compile the comments and bring them to the full Board of Commissioners at a later date. On November the eighteenth, I attended the Planning Board meeting to ensure items that I have been working on in the Planner Compacity were addressed and to present the Commissioners' Request for Text Amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding assisted-living facilities. The Planning Board will consider this issue and have a recommendation ready at its December sixteenth meeting. On November the twenty-first, I attended College of the Alamo Strategic Planning Session in Elizabeth City. They are planning a college's course for the next three to five years. Dr. Candy Diener-Meyer and I also spoke briefly about Gates County Wallops and attendance. We, along with the Chair of the Commissioners, will meet in Gates County on Tuesday, January twentieth, at twelve noon to discuss COA. And I also attended a meeting of County Managers and Economic Developers to listen to Van Rogers to discuss the future of the Northeast Alliance. And included in your packet, I do have some more information, and that is on the agenda later. We received this after I had compiled my report, so we'll have more information about that later in the meeting. I would also like to take time, even though this is after my Commissioners' Report, I mean, excuse me, County Manager's Report, like to thank everyone who assisted with the Thanksgiving lunch at Community Center. Even though it was a very rainy day last Wednesday, I believe fifty-plus people were in attendance, and I would like to thank everyone who helped prepare the food, and I hope it was enjoyable for those who were in attendance. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from anyone? And you said we watched outside this joint study that the Navy wants...
Yes, ma'am. And I would like to add one other thing. Last week, I did receive an update from James Andreas with Andreas and Company regards to the courthouse. And he said he hopes to get the steel by the end of this week so that they can begin work the week of December the eighth. We are still working on getting the contract finalized and signed, but we hope they can begin work next week.
Thank you about the report. Finance and tax report. You have the financial report. Do you have any questions? I have a budget memo that we can read later. Any questions about finance? And the tax report we received by email.
Ms. Chase, Mrs. Hill, Schlicht is at School of Government. She said that... Is there any questions for that tax report? Ask her when she gets back. That we did have a refund that we need to get approved.
Okay. Was there any questions about the report that were sent to us? I guess we'll just make our comments to Mrs. Schlicht. Okay, the tax or refund?
Refund was $420 in the opposite half. A lady paid, they were paid online, official payments, so we need to return the money to her.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I did have a question on this. I looked at it and I'm trying to decipher. I recognize it's probably a complex transaction. But it says we received the official payment from the taxpayer in the amount of $131.71. And what I'm trying to figure out is that it looks like they paid by credit card to BMB. Is that correct?
They paid it to us, and they paid it to us.
Well, so it never went to BMB?
She paid it to us and she paid it to BMB. She paid it twice. She thought she had to pay it to us.
Right. So she paid it on, well, on the credit card to BMB and then paid it to us?
Then to us, yes.
Okay, all right. Well, that's what I was trying to understand.
Okay, should our system have picked up that it had already been paid? Does our system, should that have come out?
I'm not sure about that. I'm not sure how that works yet. But I mean, she had it. She owed us $11.66. She did owe Gates County an old deal that's in our system. Of course, the deals that she paid is not in our system because it's to the BMB now. So she... James, you have a question there. Probably would have not picked it up.
And this is probably a little premature as well. BMB has not sent us the payment yet that she paid them. Or I don't know how often that comes in quarterly, or is it my head?
We did, but it's muddling, so we all did not pay it as the other church was lost. She paid it to him. But the systems are completely different. When they allow to make an official payment, there is nothing there that would compare any payment made to what BMB has received, because obviously, BMB is a totally separate entity.
Yeah, and I'm familiar with that, because when it comes to time for you to renew your license, you've got to get those renewed, you've got to get your cards back, your vehicles back, and you also got to pay your taxes. So they don't... You can't get your car re-registered unless you pay your taxes. So it, you know, it's a guarantee.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this request for a refund?
Someone?
Second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
In your packet, you have a personnel report. Any comments? Okay, departmental reports.
There were all provided. And thank you much for the participation here today. If you have specific questions.
I do have one question, Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Just looking at buildings and grounds, or there's a... There's an entry there that says the painting on the courthouse has been temporarily... Okay, I am four. It says paint job of Old Courthouse is now on hold until further notice. Could you give us a little update on what, why that's on hold and what's going on with that?
He cannot, he has just stopped work until the West Wing is complete. And then that way, he does not have to continually rent the lifts and cost us more money. Because every time he rents the lift, we have to amend his contract, but constantly the contract. And his business amendment was for rental of the lifts for one time use to paint the entire building, and that is not the case.
And this is all exterior paint?
Correct.
Any other questions from anyone? I do believe that we do have a budget request, departmental budget memo. We ended that. Okay. We come down to correspondence, articles, entries, and county members calendar. If you look on December fourteenth, we only have one Commissioner meeting tonight, it's this day. We have Christmas today, and baseball starts at three. And the Commissioners are generally asked to drive. And county employees, the holiday celebrations on the twenty-third at three.
Correct.
Okay, we also look at, we have information about holiday schedules for the coming year of 2015 as well as our...
Madam Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If you would, articles and entries, if you would just go back there, please.
Okay.
On the Alamo World Convention, all the national letters that are submitted.
Yes, sir.
The county manager, they, obviously, this is, appears to be a time for error. But I would like to... I would like to read that section. On the third paragraph, I think it's got several places in here where they refer to July of 15, or the 2015, and I realize that's a type of natural error. But, you know, these dates, it says the new formula took effect on July 15, 2015. It is now within, August, that would be 2014.
I would think so.
And also in November 2015, it talks about the ARCO staff and tech members began soliciting refractoryization to develop local point assisted methodology. And then they go back to 2014, but I just wanted to see if...
I can send, this is, I was gonna say, this is from Angela Welch, the RPO, and I can ask her to address it and resubmit a letter.
Yeah, I think the dates do need to reflect some adversity in this. When those meetings took place, when they will take place again.
Thank Commissioner Jordan for that. Okay, we have the schedule for the meetings for next year. I think there's a problem with January 19th, isn't that Martin King called up?
Yes, and we had discussed at the November 17th meeting, I believe, to put that on hold until, well, not to schedule the meeting and then decide after the first meeting in January if we needed a meeting. However, the Planning Board has met, and Jennifer Baptiste has requested a meeting between the Planning Board, Board of Adjustment, and the Board of Commissioners, and the Planning Board recommended January the 20th. Because that's the date that the Board of Adjustment and the Planning Board are already scheduled to meet. And it was also said that if we needed to meet following after that, everyone would already be here for the joint meeting. We needed to have a Commissioners meeting that could immediately follow. But that was just a recommendation.
Ways of closure of the group. You've heard that the manager has, planner has requested a joint meeting between the Planning Board and the Board of Adjustment and Commissioners, and they recommend January 20th, and that maybe we could combine those and then have a meeting if necessary for Commissioners that evening.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We should leave that evening, I'd like to, we'd rather follow the planning board for about four o'clock.
Right, well, whatever, whichever is most convenient.
Maybe three o'clock.
Right, that was the time that the Planning Board recommended meeting, three o'clock.
Right, and then if we needed to meet, we need to run back at four?
I mean, the thought was, Board, that if, you know, if there was some urgent business that needed to be addressed once we get through that joint board meeting, we could convene and address any issues that needed to be addressed.
That makes sense.
Do I hear a motion?
Someone say.
Now, motions been made that we hold our second meeting in January on January 20th. About that day, that we'll start 3:00 PM with a joint meeting between the three boards, and if necessary, we'll have a second meeting directly thereafter. Any questions or discussions? All those that they've adjusted in our schedule meetings to include January 20th at 3:00? All those that favor that, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We go down to public hearings, there are none. We go through old business, and we have Mesco an update.
Mike McAllister is here, and he'll give an update.
Good morning. Since we last met, Don Will attended to make contact with Alamo Regional Health. He did make contact with one gentleman over there, and he says it was his fault that you haven't taken that, that thing to discuss the last time, the on-site system with the rural state property process, which is going to take about nine months. So that's really anything that's changed since we last met. He did look at his product at the last meeting, it's probably not the solution.
For what reason?
Yes. I'd be happy to answer the question.
So it's been taken to the Health Department?
He did discuss it with the gentleman at the Health Department. He did defer it to Mr. Caldwell. I don't think Mr. Caldwell would call him back. It was the feeling of the gentleman that he did talk to, since it was greater than the 3,000 gallons per day, that more than likely it will stay some longer. And that caused this whole property process to cross us out, considering. It goes back for, within the Health Department and DHHS.
What did start now, you said, you didn't say definitely, you said most likely?
Most likely.
Having said that, do we start down the particular path and let it, and it just naturally takes that course? Or we started down that path and, yes, it does, or no, it doesn't? Not knowing for certain, we learn?
Yeah.
Not take things for certain?
Well, we certainly got some more options. I think Don pretty well explained to you at the last meeting that you have some other options that you don't have with land application. I think we could probably make that work, but I would certainly get his recommendations and get his freezing full time, his hand in out there at the same time, and let's make sure before we get down that path.
What other options are we talking about, other than the tile and drip system?
Well, unless you've got another site, it's a reasonable, that's it.
Well, that is the option.
It is the option.
Okay, and so we're talking possibly $10,000 is what we're looking at? $10,000?
All right.
Or whatever it is. Now, what would be the first step in going through the state to get their authorization approval to utilize that site?
The first step is, Don will need to prepare a preliminary report on the property. He's already done it, considering on field, so that should be fairly easy to produce. And then we'll make application to the one Health Department, and then we go from there. And we'll lay out the system, and it goes back to the Health Department, and up to DHHS and their Mountain Health Section, and it's back and forth process.
Are they asking through that process that you just laid out? Are they asking for a recommendation as they go there?
No, this is the first stop, first step, is to get your recommendations on what kind of system would be, is it a drip or a low-pressure pipe system, which would be best suited? What kind of remediation they need to get from the soils? I need that information from my soil scientists before we make application to the town.
I guess the challenge is, you know, even if we go down this route, we would need some assurance as to whether or not it's going to work because it would involve acquiring the property. As you're aware, the proposal that we currently have will end in January. Now, if this takes nine months, and if we cannot extend and bring in the proposal element without some kind of payment, and this thing has problems, you know, we could be out there having invested in something that would not produce what we're looking for. So, you know, the question is actually, you know, one of this process, I mean, what, is this a fairly fair say?
Nothing. You're dealing with permitting with the state agency, nothing is settled. You know, until you have a permit in hand, it is not fixed. And even then, it's such a legal. So I can't stand here to continue that they're going to get exactly what you're claiming. Just like I couldn't with the land application system. I think it's a better fit than what the spray field is. Certainly, you certainly have some more options as far as sand crunches and things of that nature that you do not have with land application. I think it's good, I just don't know if Don did.
In previous discussion, you presented, Ms. Hopple, who mentioned a system in Kirkville County? How school system is it?
I believe I said assisted living, or the nursing home overlay. Barco has a subject system.
Yeah, my question is...
Yeah, have you, are you, do you have any knowledge on that? I mean, not on the topic or anything, but on that particular system?
None of that, too.
So on that, I mean, I know you're...
This is a subject system, but it's out of my knowledge of Kirkville's system.
I mean, I'm just curious, do we learn anything by looking into that or?
Sure, always, always go over and ask questions, actually.
And of course, our current, our school system has service systems, as Trudy Harrell's telling us about. And they have some alternative systems, that's why.
Now, in our, Madam Chairman, in our last meeting, I think part of this was discussed in closed session.
That's correct.
We made you aware that based on current proposal, that unless this was feasible for us to move forward, we would still need to have Dean or NCD or address what our current situation is. In other words, yeah, if you deny or whatever, because it's not, that would...
I don't, under the circumstances and the application rates that Don has come up with, I don't think any denial of it would be a problem.
I mean, we're not, you know, obviously, they're relying on your data to determine whether or not the site is suitable. And once they get that, of course, they have the authority to adjust that if they wanted to, or certainly not rely on their professional opinion of the site, you know, without making too much adjustment. But do you have things in place to, you know, we don't have to meet and talk about this, obviously, of where we're going, but if we, if we did need that, are you all prepared to get back to dinner?
We can certainly do that. I don't think that would be a problem based on my discussions with the regional office.
Yeah, well, comments?
Well, I'd just like to say that, you know, this is, this is a new process. Obviously, we, you know, have to look at something, and in going forward, I think the next thing we need to do is to get in touch with the landlord and see what their ability is to work with this, if we decide to take this process, because we're talking nine months. And Clark got in to January. So, you know, that's where we are. If we go this route, we're going to have to have some kind of new agreement, some kind of working relationship to help us get through this process. Because I can't see the Board myself, I speak for myself as well. I think the Board is going to, I know we're not going to purchase something not knowing what the outcome is going to be.
Right.
Um...
No one actually.
So we do have a discussion, okay. All right, well, I'll, I'll hold on to the discussion.
Okay, thank you for that. And you said, once again, retaliate that he will send the information to Dean of, like the... Denial of... Thank you. Second part of the old business is proclamation recognizing the Cho-Note Indian Tribe. I think some research has been done, I'd like to, certainly, we are pleased that the Cho-Notes are interested in the reservation that was here many, many years ago. I do believe that the Cho-Notes are not recognized by the state or federal regulations as an Indian Nation. There is a process you have to go through for that. So I'm not sure exactly how we should proceed with this. Also, if you kind of look at, it says whereas the Cho-Note Indians have a reservation in Gates County, North Carolina, and still holds title, well, not holds title, they have not had concurrently, you know, all those years, they have just received that. And that where it says remain a distinct community, that might not be, we can, might not can back that up either. It might say identify themselves as a distinct community, because they have kind of reform. They talk about their documentation, but we don't have that, that. But I know the documentation exists, because I have seen the deeds myself. So what do you think we should do with this?
Madam Chairman, I think when they were here the other day, we had just a little bit of discussion about it, and I think everybody was interested in what they were trying to accomplish. But it says proclamation here, and I might always be able to look back and say that a proclamation had credibility and it had some value to it, otherwise, you know, this is just a piece of paper. I certainly want to recognize it, but I would, I think I would rather us not address it today. And I was not aware of the things that you just touched on, is the reason I'm saying this. And do a little more research only then before we issue proclamation. That would be my recommendation to the Board, and if there's, if there's any more discussion, I will make a motion after.
Are those the same two things that you mentioned, that when it says they still hold title, of course, they now, they're strictly now hold title, but then continue, continuously hold title? And the same thing that Chona Indians have remained a distinct community, I don't, I don't know that they have. I'm all for the recognition of healthy group, but I do think there's some words in here that are not clear, are not correct.
Madam Chairman, I would certainly, whatever, in that same motion, exactly, put it into a formal motion. That we did do more back-line investigation into the documentation for the Chona.
And certainly, we want to encourage them, but we think it's a great thing, but we just want to make sure we collect, clarify some of the language.
Madam Chairman, I would look that we table this issue until we've done our due diligence and to be addressed in our January meeting if possible.
Okay, I'll second.
I'll say. I would like to add a little bit into that debate that we contact them and request the documentation that they have.
I'll add back my motion, which felt, okay?
Commissioner Freeman, will you just go on?
Yeah, comments? Okay, all those to, if they go take...
Okay, all those to, they're tableing this proclamation until January 2015. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, so we can table that.
For classification, I'm ready to take charge of making this.
Yes, I'll need some more research. Okay, moving on to new business. We have some appointments to make. Bill and Mr. Gerrenkin's positions. And that's one of the, I would say privileges of serving on the board is you get several, several other things. Former Commissioner Gerrenkin served on the Admiral Regional Health Service Board and the GATS Board as Commissioner. He is no longer a Commissioner, so we have to have a new appointee for tonight, given.
Madam Chairman, I would make a recommendation to the board that our new friend in county commission, Mr. Ray Freeman, serve on both of those boards mentioned in this letter. That's a recommendation. I'll make an emotion.
Second. Okay, motion's been made in second. Who to appoint? Ray Freeman as our Commissioner for the Admiral Regional Health Service Board and the GATS Board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Just new drops for you. Okay, we have a EMS request.
Yes. Before you, you have some information from North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, EMS Medicaid cost settlement program. Met with two people last week. Dory Bux was one of them EMS, and he brought this to my attention. He said that currently Gates County is one of seven that have EMS systems set up as it currently is set up, which means that the county does not solely operate EMS. And we do not have a contract with a provider to provide EMS services. What the EMS would like to do is they would like to complete that limitation for the EMS enhanced federal Medicaid settlement program, which would allow them to recoup some of the costs for services they provide. Basically, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners will do, complete the paperwork. They keep a small portion of the money as administrator, and then the money would be passed down to the county for EMS. The EMS does have to have permission from the Board of Commissioners for them to use this program. The application is due February 28, 2015. And they said that what would be required of the county is for us to sign a contract with them stating that Gates County EMS, they are our EMS provider, they are our 911 responders. And they said that that contract will allow them to participate in this program. And it will also allow them, if a state of emergency is ever declared and FEMA money is available to them, that they would be eligible to apply for FEMA money to help offset some of the costs of their staff working overtime. This program, they said they were not sure how much money they would actually recoup through Medicaid, but they're asking that the county be a pass-through. In other words, want the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners complete the paperwork, Medicaid sends them the money. Commissioner Association send that money to the county, and then we would just pass it to the EMS, because EMS is doing the work. And the way they're set up, they cannot receive their money directly. So, that's why they're asking us to be a pass-through as well.
But would that be funded through our finance department?
It would have to funnel through finance, and then they can just write the check to EMS.
Our finance would be requesting the money to give us the questions from the finance department. Finance department would send it to the military, and then it would come back.
We haven't worked out those details. They want to, first of all, would the county even allow them to proceed with completing the application and then get into all of the, here's the application that they have to complete.
Are you aware if there are any provisions for reimbursement of county time, of our staff? Or is that just a, over yet to do with that sort?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, would not be appropriate costs of that?
Not that I'm aware of, but we've not, we did not go through all of the details of this application the other day. They did say if we had any questions. They gave me, they took two different people to contact as well as Edgecombe County, because they have just started participating in this program. And Edgecombe's EMS is set up like Gates County's EMS.
Well, Madam Chairman, I would be in favor of proceeding, but certainly you would want to find out if there are any provisions in this reimbursement process that covers administrative costs that might help us with time and personnel that are gonna be involved in making this work.
Because you said that the North Carolina County Commission Association, they said we'll take the money I run administrative rights. And it looks like that we should be able to recoup ours.
You would think that maybe some percentage, you have, whether it's one, two, three, five percent or something, cover that cost front.
I think making a motion that we proceed to, with this, to investigate.
And can find out if there are any provisions for reimbursement of administrative costs. I would say, Commissioner Madam Chairman.
Okay, a motion's been made in second. Any discussion?
Yes. Before you need to place some contract, and then that's between?
EMS and the county.
Okay. Before, we'll revisit this for a refresh or update before we sign the contract?
Right, because in order for them to actually apply for this Medicaid settlement, they have to have a contract in place as well. And they do not have one at this time. So, the application for the Medicaid cost settlement program, February 28.
We would probably revisit January.
That's right, that's great. Go through the description.
Okay. All those who say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, consideration for resolution opposing the ruling on same-sex marriage. Any comments?
Madam Chairman, does anybody have any history on this issue? I read over it. And I was gonna guess that this is, has come before us because not too far away from here, there was some match that's that reviews marrying the same-sex player. Is that what it's coming for?
This was something that was sent out on a county clerk's list serve in Des Moines, Blading County. And I'm not sure of any other background, although it did not come from the register of deeds.
Well, you know, as, as, as the past chairman, with this, and I was being aware of it, considering how this was done, how it came to be, came to be of legality. I felt that it should be presented forward. Voters of North Carolina vote, the majority, not to recognize it. But we have a judge who had privilege to decide the article of the North Carolina Constitution, it's taken a bit of violation of it, which is his opinion. And I felt that, you know, we should address this. I'm in favor of a resolution opposing the judge's decision. That's basically what the resolution is known as, opposing the judge's decision, along with Lake County and all the other counties that signed up to work. I would certainly be in favor of Gates County issuing a resolution that would be submitted against this decision that was made. Make a motion. I'll say.
Okay, a motion has been made to approve this resolution until opposition of ruling on the same-sex marriage. Any other comments? All those who say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We pass the resolution. Okay.
Of course, it has to be modified for Gates County County.
North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, update video. Yes, there was a video that was shared, and we were asked to show it today during our first meeting with our newly elected stock commissioners. So, Warren and Melissa have been testing this out. We keep it, our fingers crossed that it does work. The board's going to start the video, it will show up here on the screen. And I believe it's inside, nine minutes, six minutes, okay.
Hi, my name's Kevin Linder, and I'm honored to be your executive director of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. On behalf of all of our staff here at the association, I would like to extend to you a special hello, to your board, and a congratulations to our newly elected commissioners. And being a county commissioner, we know can be challenging, sometimes a thankless job. But please know that we appreciate all of you who are willing to step up and be a leader in your county and in your state. It's an exciting time here at our association. It's a time of change, transition, and new ideas. And my hope is to hear from you about your new ideas that will make our association even stronger as we move forward. In this brief video, you will hear about some upcoming opportunities for you to learn more about county government and our association. We're actually in the process of developing our legislative agenda for the upcoming by any. And it's not too late for you to get involved. I encourage you to attend our Legislative Goals Conference, which will be held in Moore County this January, to learn about the legislative issues and to get involved in our grassroots advocacy efforts. You know, we're very fortunate that our association in North Carolina is one of the strongest county government associations in the entire nation. And our secret, our secret is you. Through your active participation, together we are 100 counties strong, and together we can do great things. As always, please call us if we can be of any assistance, and I look forward to seeing you soon.
The association has completed the first three stages of its five-step legislative goals process. The last stage, your Legislative Goals Conference, is January 15th and 16th in Moore County. We have 45 goals still under consideration regarding issues as diverse and critical as mental health, 911 funding, broadband services, Medicaid, school construction funding, and economic development, among many others. At the conference, county commissioners such as Tris Boll will debate and vote on those goals remaining after board approval in December. All 100 counties have the opportunity to send one voting delegate to be part of the final decision on NCAACC's 2015-16 legislative agenda. Make sure your county is part of the process by registering on our website. We need input from all ring groups to give us the strongest position possible to advocate for your agenda at the General Assembly.
One of the association's primary responsibilities is to help you understand your roles and responsibilities as county commissioners. There are numerous educational opportunities coming up in the next few months. The first is for new board chairs and vice chairs on January 14th in Moore County. This day-long session will teach presiding officers the rules of procedure and how to manage a meeting. At the end of the day, all board members are invited to a discussion of general parliamentary procedure. In addition to this training, every two years following county government elections, we partner with the School of Government at the University of North Carolina to sponsor the Essentials of County Government Schools. The comprehensive two-day course serves as an orientation to county government law and practice for new and veteran county commissioners. It is the foundation course for earning credits in the local elected leaders academy. The Essential Schools will be offered in four locations throughout the state in January and February. The curriculum includes basic county government law, local taxation, and the financing of county government services, handling conflicts of interest, public school financing, and building relationships with other boards and interests. Also included is the two-hour mandatory ethics training required by state law for every new or returning commissioner within one year of election or reelection. Veteran commissioners not enrolled in the Essentials classes, as well as municipal elected officials, can attend this advanced seminar for modest fee. To learn more about these programs, please visit our website at the address on your screen.
I want to make everyone aware of a new service we rolled out November this year. It's a human resources legal hotline, and it is designed to assist risk pool members with basic time-sensitive employment issues, such as employee terminations, addressing harassment, discrimination allegations, or even requests for reasonable accommodations. Basically, issues that if handled properly could lead to litigation and avoid HR problems. We've contracted directly with risk pool attorneys that have strong employment law experience in order to provide sound HR legal advice and no initial cost to our membership. If you are a member of the risk management pools, and you do have to be a member to have access, you should have received information from me in November about how to gain access and utilize this service. This is yet another example of our efforts to continually improve our risk management products and services and value to an already superior government-based risk coverage and finance program. And in fact, the NCAACC Risk Management Pools are the number-one provider of property liability and workers' compensation coverage for the apparel state with 68 of 100 counties participating as risk pool members.
Thank you, Warren. Technology's great, man, it works.
Yeah, it's true.
Moving along, Northeast Alliance Report?
Yes. I think in front of me, you have a letter dated November the 24th from Van Lauberson. As you're aware, the Northeast Commission, represented as Gates County, is one of 16 counties for economic development and marketing. And as of June 30th of this year, all of the funding from the legislature ended because of the public-private partnership that was established. And on July 1st, the Northeast Commission became the Northeast Alliance, which was a private 501(c)(6) nonprofit. And their goal was to continue operating and representing the 16 counties that they've always represented, and they wanted to actually come and solicit counties at 30 cents per capita plus private business funds in order to keep operating. However, as things progressed and they actually had some outside consultants come in, look at their finances, they realized that what they wanted to do was not economically feasible for them as a board. So, what they decided to do before met evidently during the month of October and beginning of November, and decided that they would partner with NC East, which is, well, they were not sure the other day exactly how many counties they cover. First, someone said seven, and then they thought it was 10 because some of the counties were not sure if they were actually going to participate in NC East. They have, the Northeast Alliance has signed a non-bonding letter intent to merge operations with the NC East Alliance, and it would be a five-year operational program. And on the back of the paper, it does outline key provisions that payments will be made by the North Carolina's Northeast for all 16 counties, which would allow each county to participate fully as affiliates for the North Carolina East Alliance in client recruiting and marketing for the lifetime of the MOU, which is supposed to be five years. The Northeast will be given seats on the East Alliance Board, and office will remain in the Northeast region for the life of the MOU. Currently, they were in Ennington, they recently opened offices at the Tele Center in Williamson. The Northeast staff will continue to work in the region so that there will be regional avenues to see. Payments for the North Carolina East Alliance will be spread over the life of the MOU, and this is to safeguard the monies that they currently do have. And John Shaker will be the chair for the combined region, and Van Rogerson will become staff of the North Carolina East Alliance. They are, um, this is the, was brought up at the meeting that I attended last week with a few other county commissioners and economic developers from the 16 counties. It came as a great shock to all of the economic developers who were in the room. And the advantage that was presented by Van Rogerson is that you'll have almost five years of marketing through the North Carolina East Alliance that will cover basically from far south of the north all the way to the Virginia border. They will pay, like I said, for five years. After five years, if Gates County decides to participate in the North Carolina East Alliance, then we would have to pay. That it was equivalent to about 30 cents per capita, and I figured that out. That's about $3,639 a year that it will cost us to join to be a member. And if you looked at that over the five years, that's $16,195 for five years. There was lots of discussion, especially among the counties that have economic developers, about was this a good deal? And for those of us in the room that county managers, the economic developer, we felt like this was probably as good a deal as we were ever going to get. For $16,000, you cannot hire someone, and that was for five years at $16,000, $3,000 a year, and that the money had already been basically promised to this organization, and that we would trot for the five years. And at the end of the MOU, if our counties decided it was worth the money, if we received enough leads, if we received any economic development activities from this organization, then our counties could put forth the money to participate. I do want to make you aware that there are some counties who are not happy with this situation. They feel like the money, the economic developers should have been given a say, and in fact, Halifax County has drafted a resolution requesting North Carolina's Northeast Alliance suspend efforts to force membership of Halifax County in the North Carolina East Alliance. It's an all, you have to go whether you want to or not. Their portion, the way it was presented, was your portion of the money for Halifax County, Gates County, for Quinones County was going to the Northeast, I mean, North Carolina East Alliance, whether Halifax County, Gates County, for Quinones County wanted to participate or not. They were still going to send you leads, whether you actively pursued them or not. That was left to your economic developer.
And you said Forsyth County?
Halifax County.
Do they have an economic developer?
Yes, they do.
Like, and you know, that's kind of explains, you know, why they're really not interested. But I, I, you know, it's a win-win, right? You don't have to ban it and then make a decision after five, four, and a year.
And that, and I just wanted to bring that to you because that's sitting in the position of economic developer as well. That's the way I looked at it. I'll be honest, I did speak with David Clay and Carol Kelly, who has the same capacity, and Kevin Howard, who they do have a part-time economic developer, and Jerry Rhodes in Washington. They were all in agreement. As economic developers and county managers, you only have so much time in a day, and that we felt like we were not going to get any less than what we were getting. We might not get any more than what we've been getting. Let's ride it out for the five years, and then when the MOU is finished, we can then decide what we need to do. Any other comments?
I'd rather make a good deal session than have to.
I'd make some estimations.
I would say that this would be a matter that we need to vote on when we're in the Economic Development Committee. We've been staying in the meeting quarter, and we need to, like, take this vote during that meeting.
We don't really even have to respond. They were not even requesting a response from us. It was more or less, they're moving forward anyway, and that if you had concerns such as Halifax, they needed to express those.
And I thought, the reason I think that's important is we're looking back historically at the economic development issues come up, such as this, even though we don't have to really do, but I think it would be wise that in our minutes that we discuss these things when we're meeting, is that group.
I'm sure that, you know, I made a notion, which always is recommended, that this is one of our agenda items, economic development condition due function, to part of the candidates of being a part of.
There's no decision really to be made, but it's just a matter of having it in practice.
And this is agenda item, discussion of economic development avenues.
I was just trying to recall, when is our next meeting?
We have not, uh...
It's on the, that calendar. Pardon, the calendar for the dates of the meetings.
Listen, as a county manager, it doesn't sound like it's something we have to do right away anyway.
It's not... If you look for the first quarter about 1:00, so we will need to... I would think we could have one in January. Well, we could have it on that January 20th. Because they have it scheduled for the second, the second, uh... The second meeting, and it's six o'clock. So, would you entertain a motion to move that on the agenda or to have the economic,
uh... Free bumping?
Correct.
I'm sure now of the update of motion, of the meeting, which we schedule it for that date.
Okay, and second?
Second.
We'll concur. Okay, any comments, questions? All those in favor of taking in this motion until we meet with the Economic Development Commission on January 20th, 2015? All those in favor of that? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, I believe now we have citizen comments. Oh, budget amendment, I'm sorry. I left that off. Thank you. Keep, keep straight. Budget amendment, okay?
I just have one budget amendment, and this is a reallocation of funds within the Genesis grant for the Extension Department. Generally, these don't come either done as administrative amendments, but part of this involves your personnel line, which is what makes it a requirement for you all to approve it.
What number is that?
Number nine.
Okay. It's page 167 in our packet.
67?
167. Page 167. I will entertain a motion.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendment, nine. That's perceived.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, moving right along. I believe now we are citizen comments. We would bring Paul. The retired lady.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is the first time I've addressed you all as a retiree, so that the record shows Dr. Burke back there, isn't it? I just wanted to say, since Esther has gotten up here to share a view about the Gates Partners for Health six-months report and her resignation, I, as chairman of the Gates Partners for Health, would like to publicly recognize Esther's hard work. It was with mixed emotions when she submitted her resignation to us, and we discussed it at our previous board meeting. I have mixed feelings, one, because I understand her desire not to look at another deadline or a report, but also, we know that her shoes are going to be hard to fill. Esther has been an engaged employee with the Gates Partners for Health with commitment to her community. She has been proactive in ensuring that our partnerships have grown strong, where our Gates Partners for Health Board has been very active over the years, and many of the other counties' boards or committees have gone by the wayside. She's been very innovative in coming up with ways that we can maximize our resources, a great collaborator, collaborator, as you can see, because she's been the, the point person for a lot of the collaborators coming together for the various programs that we've had, and she's just had an overall passion for her work. So, I just wanted to publicly let Esther know that as a board officer and member, that we're going to really miss her, but we didn't wrangle her into staying with us. So, basically, she's going to be volunteering now instead of getting paid. But, with that being said, the Alamo Health Department did inform us they will be advertising the position, but it will be on a contracted basis now. Before Esther was...
Ten. Ten hours.
She was supposed to be 10 hours of work, but she put 40 hours into the 10-hour position. But the next position will be contracted. So, if you know of anybody that has all those characteristics I just named, we would really like to have them apply for the position. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Any other comments? Citizen comments? Now, we'll have our commissioner comments tonight, and we'll start with Commissioner Owens and go down to the table.
It's good to see everyone. I want to welcome my good friend, Mr. Ray Freeman, to be with us today, and I see you that your wife is here, supporting you today. Tricia, glad to have you with us as well, and look forward to your phone ringing off the hook. But anyway, Ray, we welcome you aboard, and I'm going, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank you for your service.
I thank, thank you, Jack. I do thank everyone for being here today, and just maybe, as I always say, you know, this is where the rubber meets the road. We don't get to Washington, D.C., participate in our federal government, those who make the big decisions. Certainly, we do participate in our locals where we make decisions that really affect us all. I agree, Ray. I welcome you aboard. Get ready. It is, it's a great job. It's very rewarding, but it is demanding. So, I welcome you and thank you for stepping up to the plate to serve. Chairman, I have one issue, well, not an issue, but I have one thing that I feel needs to be brought to the board at this time, and hopefully you will allow it to be addressed. As part of our personnel policy, it is required that the chairman of the board would serve on the personnel board, and also a member of the commission board. We have a new chairman, and I do, I thank the board for the two years that I've served and confidence in allowing me to serve, and I've certainly tried to do the best job I could, but sometimes change is good, it's necessary, and I wish all the best to, to our new chairman, Mr. Chairman. I know it's important, I'd make you as successful as possible in that position. I would recommend that, one of our commissioners, I have served, served on that personnel board probably five years. I would recommend that Phil Felton, to serve on that board as the commissioner, he would accept that as a nomination. Surely, I think we need to do that today because those personnel boards need, or many times we have them monthly prior to a commissioner's meeting. So, if Chris Felton would accept that, I certainly would make that nomination.
Certainly, it would be the idea, I'd say that. I came out, it was on the agenda for the January meeting, but we, if we could go ahead and do it today, Commissioner Felton will accept. So, Melissa Jordan has made a motion that Commissioner Felton would reduce me on the personnel board. Do I have a second? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Caris?
Thank you so much, Chairman, and I'm here. Thank you for the conversation. Glad we served you.
I too would like to thank everyone for coming this morning, and I wouldn't even make the point, as London says, I do every time, about how many people are from my side of the county out there, but I won't even mention that at this time, but I do appreciate all of y'all coming, and we look forward to a good year, and as London mentioned in her acceptance, I won't call it a speech, but in her acceptance, that we would like to see a good deal, transparency, we want every citizen in the county to know what's going on, nothing to be kind of pulled over your head, just want everybody to know exactly what's going on. And I too welcome with great pleasure my friend Ray Freeman on, on the board, look forward to working with him, and Ray, you, when I, when I took this job, I made the statement that I didn't know the 40-hour job, 40-hour a week job, and it's not.